Welcome to the 2020 Dawson County Chamber Board of Education Candidate Forum. I am Kristi Moore, President of the Dawson County Chamber, and I will act as moderator for this forum. This forum is hosted by our Chamber Advocacy Committee, which is tasked with continually advocating for our members and acting as the voice of business for our community. You are now able to vote early at the Board of Elections Office from 8:00 a.m. until 5:00 p.m., Monday through Friday through October 30th. Saturday voting is happening this Saturday, October 24th, from 9:00 a.m. until 4:00 p.m. at the Board of Elections. Election Day is Tuesday, November 3rd. If you are voting by absentee ballot, we encourage you to drop them in the secure collection box at the Board of Elections. Once you vote, please post a picture of your peach voter sticker with the hashtag #DawsonVotes on social media. Please note that the Chamber does not endorse a particular party nor candidates. We work diligently to ensure that the forum is fair to participants and informative to our members. Questions were predetermined by the Advocacy Committee. For this forum, each candidate will have three minutes to introduce themselves, two minutes to respond to each question, and two minutes for a closing statement. Candidates have not seen the questions prior to them being asked. Our candidates are seated in alphabetical order by last name. Opening statements will be given in alphabetical order. Each following question will be answered by the next candidate in alphabetical order. Our timekeeper is Melissa Mayne. She will hold up warning signs when you have one minute left, 30 seconds left, and when your time has run out. This forum is not a debate, so personal attacks or speaking over another candidate will not be tolerated. To kick us off, we're going to begin with opening statements, three minutes each. We will begin, Mr. Ingram.
Well, thank you very much. I want to appreciate and appreciation to the Chamber of Commerce for putting this on. It allows the public an opportunity to get to know us. I want to say it was a pleasure getting a chance to meet each of the other candidates. I'm sorry I didn't get a chance to do that so already. My name is Nathan Ingram. I am a native of Dawson County, a Loudlawn resident, as is my wife. We both attended schools here in Dawson County. We have three boys, or I should say, young men, as two of them have already graduated, and one is a sophomore at Dawson County High School right now. We have a beautiful, adorable granddaughter, which unfortunately we do not get to see often enough. But I graduated in Dawson County, Dawson County High School in 1992. After that, I attended the University of North Georgia, or at the time, North Georgia College. I was a pre-professional, pre-med plan of study, so I graduated Bachelor of Science, Biology degree, Chemistry minor. Continuing that study, I worked for about two years in a dialysis unit, kidney failure patients. At some point in time, probably during my last year, I realized that the career in medicine was not what I wanted to follow. And so I was at a point in time in my life where, you know, what am I going to do with my life and, you know, pursuing with my career? I was offered a position here locally with an insurance agent. I spent four years working as an insurance agent, in an insurance agent's office, as a licensed property casualty life and health sub-agent. It was a great time. I got a chance to meet many individuals in the community because at that time, there was probably only three or four significant agencies here in Dawson County. At one point in time, I was offered a position in the CPA, with a CPA firm in Gainesville. Accounting was one of my second loves, aside from biology and medicine. And so I took that position. And in doing so, contingent upon me taking that position, I had to go back to North Georgia College. I went back for an accounting degree to get my CPA license, which I did. Working there, I worked there for 10 years. We did personal to returns, corporate tax returns, but about 50% of our business was in government auditing. And we audited counties and municipalities in the North Georgia area. There came a point in time where I wanted to work with one client. We had about 200 to 300 clients at the CPA firm I worked with. And I was afforded that opportunity in the City of Canton. I was offered the position of Chief Financial Officer in 2011 in the City of Canton. I've been there since. And up until a year ago, I was a Chief Financial Officer, but now I'm the Assistant City Manager with the City of Canton. My son, personal interest, we love the outdoors. My wife and I love hiking. We've traveled a lot across the United States, pulling a camper. We've been to places like Yellowstone, Yosemite, and so we really enjoy that. It gives us a chance, the family a chance, to get out in the nature and disconnect, so to speak, from the electronics and do some family bonding. So, thank you very much. Good to be here.
Thank you, Mr. Ingram. Mr. Sussman?
Hi, I'm Park Sussman. My wife Lori and I have lived here in the Dawson County area since 2011. On and off, we had a weekend lake home, lived in Duluth, Georgia, where our kids went to high school and middle school there as well. We wanted to live in Dawsonville full-time, but it was going to be a little bit of a stretch because I was working downtown Atlanta. And I was, my previous career in corporate America, I was with Marriott for 21 years and also worked for the Atlanta Convention and Visitors Bureau for 12 years. I was in leadership roles there, more on a, you know, sales and marketing side, very budget-minded, very budget-conscious. We love, you know, certainly living up here in Dawsonville, so I had to find something else to do. And being that when I was with Marriott for the 21 years, I had three cross-country moves. We are on our ninth home here in the Dawsonville area, so it all kind of clicked, and I decided to become a Realtor and get my license. So that's what I'm currently doing now. I decided to run for this position to certainly get more involved with the community at large. I felt that it was very important from, you know, from the education standpoint and also from a Realtor standpoint. One of the things our clients, or my clients, look for when moving to a new city is what are the school ratings? What are the schools like? And I want to make sure that we are keeping pace here in Dawson County with the growth that we're experiencing right now. And I know that from a Realtor standpoint, what we're seeing from corporate America, especially with COVID going on right now, is corporate America is allowing their people to work from home. So more people are escaping the big city, moving up here, and our school systems have to stay in line with the growth that we're experiencing. I know it used to be said that we were experiencing anywhere from 1% to 3% population growth, but as I see the building and construction going on right now, I think that is changing. And with the 400 corridor expanding, we're going to see that growth continue, and we're going to see a lot more students coming into the Dawson County School District. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sussman. Mr. Ingram?
Thank you, Ms. Moore, for having this panel. Thank you for having us here today. My name is David General. I am an educator, so that's part of the reason for my interest in serving on the Board of Education for Dawson County. I've had three children who are now in college, go through Dawson, graduate from Dawson County High School. I'm an educator. I teach astronomy, and I have advanced degrees in astronomy teaching, I have a graduate certificate in STEM education, and I'm about to defend my doctorate in education, leadership, and practice. So as a father of three children who have gone through Dawson County High School and Dawson County School System, I've seen a lot of things that they do wonderfully in this county. I've seen some things that could use some improvement. And in fact, when I first qualified for this election, I spoke with Damon Gibbs, and I would hate to misquote him by paraphrasing. He said that we're not 100% where we need to be, but we're moving in the right direction. And I tend to agree with him. As Mr. Sussman said, our county is growing, so one of my concerns is that we're prepared for that growth. I've heard 1.8% to 3% growth, and if that stays the same, using the factor of 72, we should expect in 24 years, double in our population. If that rate remains the same, if our rate of increased population increases, that could sneak up on us a lot quicker. So I think we need to be, have an eye towards the future. We need to be prepared with infrastructure and support systems that will be necessary for any population growth that we would have in this county. I'm a physical conservative. Dawson County spends about $16,000 per year per student, which is high compared to even our neighbors to the south, in the next county to the south. They spend a little more than half of that. They achieve excellent ratings. They are very high in the state as far as test results, as far as competency. Our county, we have 95% graduation rate. According to U.S. News and World Report, 50% proficiency in reading among our graduates and less than 40% proficiency in mathematics. So I think it's important that we continue to improve, we take the steps necessary, we provide the resources to our students and to our community. They're necessary for us to compete in the state. Thank you.
All right, well, we will begin with our first question, and some of you answered a little bit of this in your opening statement, but we would love to know what motivated you to run for position on the Dawson County Board of Education? And we'll begin with Mr. Sussman.
Yes, as I mentioned earlier, I think, you know, this gives me an opportunity to really get involved in the community here in Dawson County and invest in the future of this county because this is where I'm doing business up here. I also had conversation with Superintendent Gibbs with regard to, you know, the graduation rate. And I'm looking at it a little bit selfishly, of course, from a Realtor standpoint because a lot of people who are looking to move up to this area and we're competing with, you know, other counties such as Forsyth and Lunkin Counties, people are moving in this direction. And, you know, when you go to the Zillos of the world or the real estate websites out there, they're using GreatSchools.org as their, as their message to, as far as the school rating systems go. And I really would like us to focus at all levels of education, not just a 95% graduation rate, because as a board member, you have to look at the bigger picture, which encompasses all of the schools in the system, not just what happens at the high school level. So that's how I want to see myself getting involved and, you know, looking at the bigger picture. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. General?
Yes, so I was inspired to run for the Board of Education because, for one, I'm a father, and my three children have gone through the Dawson County School System. My friends, my neighbors, their children are currently in the school system. My nephew is a blacksmith. So I'm invested in the community. I'm invested in the people of this community. I'm a person, a service-minded person. I'm very active with Rotary. And I've raised my children to be that way. They're very active in Rotoract, which is their Rotary for younger people. I'm uniquely qualified, I think, to be a strong voice on the Board of Education, given my experience in education, managing budgets, running my own business, managing people. I manage 200 students a semester, at least. So, yeah, for these reasons, I feel like I'm uniquely qualified to serve on the Board of Education.
Thank you. Mr. Ingram?
As Mr. General mentioned, being vested in the community, my parents both graduated in Dawson County School, me and my wife both, my children both, my family members, council family members. I feel it's time now I can provide back to the community. It's literally, especially with the education system, has given so much to my family, to my extended family. And not only that, but my 20 years in government auditing or accounting, and specifically the auditing section, 10 years in auditing, handling budgets for government audits, I feel that's some information that I can bring to the position and help move Dawson County forward. Because we're all in this to, you know, to make the children as rich as possible, and the education system prepare them for life. So, you know, whatever we can do. I don't have any hidden agendas or anything like that. I rely a lot upon Dr. Gibbs and the management folks at the Board of Education for them to bring back some of that information to us so that we can chew on it and decide what's best and help progress our children forward. Best serves and remain.
Thank you. Our second question is, what is your connection to and experience with the Dawson County School System? And please include board meetings attended in the past 24 months, government's council participation, PTO participation, or any other relevant experience or knowledge of our system. And we'll begin with Mr. General.
Okay, I attended, a month ago, I attended the Board of Education meeting, and I got to hear about the five-year plan, which is very exciting. While my children were in school, I have, I've been a soccer dad, I've been a football dad, or band dad, but I worked concession stand for football, band, been to all kinds of games. I've been a band father, soccer father, drama father. My daughter was in the chamber singers. She's been to several productions, both in the old theater and the new theater of Dawson County High School. And we've participated in fundraising events and all the things associated with being a parent to children of Dawson High School. I've attended every open house, I've met all the teachers, I've gone to church to see teachers performing chorus. So I feel like I have a very strong connection to the Dawson County School System.
Absolutely. Thank you. Mr. Ingram?
Yes, obviously, I've been on the Board of Education now for about six months. My wife is, works in the food and beverage cafeteria. She's done that for quite a few years. I've been to so many with my children. I've been to so many football games, baseball games, tennis games. I almost think that I need to charge the Board of Education mileage. Yeah, it definitely keeps you busy when you have children in those sports. But it goes back to even my days when I was in school. I sat upon the Dawson County Commission for Children and Youth, and that was my first foray into sitting with other board members at that time and stakeholders within the community. So even at a young point, I got a taste, so to speak, of sitting in a board room, you know, talking about issues that involve our children. And again, going, the 20 years in government work of, you know, dealing with elected officials, dealing with policymaking and stuff. So I thought it was a great opportunity when I applied for the appointment back about six months ago. It was a great opportunity for me to give back.
Thank you. Mr. Sussman?
I guess I feel like I'm the arm's-length candidate here because I really don't, my children didn't have a connection with Dawson County Schools. I also attended the board meeting where they rolled out the five-year strategic plan, and that was the only board meeting that I had attended. My kids are grown now, and I've got four grandchildren, but they've experienced many different school systems across the country. So I bring that diversity to the knowledge that I've had outside of Dawson County to be able to offer my expertise and best practices of what I've experienced across the country. And, you know, sometimes I think that's a good thing to look from an outsider's perspective. I would definitely respect, you know, the tenure that both of you have in the Dawson County School System, and there's a definite desire that you have to certainly give back, and I do respect that. But sometimes it's good to look at things in a different perspective, a fresh set of eyes coming into Dawson County here and seeing what I see. And until I get in, if I'm so fortunate to get into that seat, I would love to get more involved, hear the perspective of the other board members, the challenges that they're facing, and move forward in a direction that we all, you know, see fit.
Absolutely. Thank you. Our next question is, what do you view as the greatest current strength of the Dawson County School System, as well as the greatest current challenge? And we will begin with Mr. Ingram.
Greatest strength, community. We have a great community in Dawson County. It's close-knit. We have a lot of people coming in, bringing great ideas to the community. So I think that's the greatest strength of Dawson County, our community. I have to give an applaud to the management team, to the teachers. I know a lot of the teachers, they're absolutely 100% committed to Dawson County, and applaud them as well. Repeat, the second part of your question was a weakness?
It said, what's the greatest challenge? Yes.
The greatest challenge may be going to, you know, bringing ideas from other organizations and being a very close-knit community has many of its strengths, but also brings forth some weaknesses where we may not be as innovative as some of our surrounding communities. But, so that may be one of the biggest challenges, bringing new ideas, bringing innovation, bringing, and how that we can prepare our children to sometimes move outside the community.
Thank you. Mr. Sussman?
I would agree on the community. I think I need to certainly get more engaged with, you know, with the school system to really understand, you know, those strengths of where we're at. I've seen over the past five years, since Superintendent Gibbs has been in place, he's increased the graduation rate tremendously from 83% to, actually, I thought it was almost 97% last time I spoke with him, which is quite an accomplishment. It's really getting the rating system up, and I think that's where the weakness is. Additionally, I think the weakness is in diversity as well, and also the education of our, you know, low-income and minority students. That's a big part of each one of the school systems that we have here in Dawson County. So, you know, that weakness is, not everybody, not all students learn the same way, and I really think it's important that we adjust accordingly. And I do think that the teachers of the county do have flexibility in the classroom, unlike some of the other counties, especially with the charter school system that, you know, we have with the state of Georgia. So, and once I get more engaged in understanding what those strengths and weaknesses are, we'll laser focus on those.
Absolutely. Thank you. Mr. General?
Okay, the greatest strength, greatest strength we have is the teachers. The teachers, and there's the support of teachers and their endeavor to educate the children. We have a very strong community. I think that the members of our community support our schools, they support our school system, they support our teachers. We're blessed to have a lot of resources that a lot of smaller school systems don't have, and, you know, our children have a great opportunity to learn, you know, not only, you know, reading, writing, arithmetic, but we have an engineering department at our high school. It's incredible. So I'm very proud of that. I think that our, the biggest challenge, there's a lot of challenges, but the most unfortunate one, I think, is generational poverty in our county. And I think, you know, it's hard for children to come to school if they're hungry. It's hard for children to come to school and learn if they're not engaged, they're worried about their family, they're worried about their conditions. But education is the way out of that. So I think we're on the right track. If we help our children get out of their financial situations, their family situations, help them become more, become capable of more, I think we'll improve the county, we'll improve the quality of life for the children in this county.
Thank you. Our next question is, as a board member, how do you intend to meet the needs of every student through additional educational and program opportunities? And with this question, we'll begin with Mr. Sussman.
Like I mentioned earlier, not all students learn the same way, and I think part of the five-year strategic plan, and one of the things I loved hearing about that plan is the assessment of the student from grade kindergarten all the way through, up through high school. And if I'm not mistaken, I thought it was a six-month assessment, and then another six-month assessment. And it's one thing about having a strategic plan, and I believe one of the board members said this, and it reminded me so much of my corporate experiences, when wrote the business plan or you wrote the strategic plan, you did, you checked that box and you put it up on the shelf and you never looked at it again. Well, I'm going to make certain that I'm going to understand what's in that strategic plan. And my, Mr. Marriott always said, what gets measured gets done, and I think it's important to go back to what you've spent time and money writing and making sure that you're measuring the results of that plan. And that's how I think we're going to move the needle on the education system here in Dawson County.
Thank you. Mr. General?
Can you repeat the question?
Absolutely. As a board member, how do you intend to meet the needs of every student through additional educational and program opportunities?
I have to agree with Mr. Sussman. The five-year plan, adhering to the five-year plan is our roadmap for providing opportunities to students. There is an assessment, and I agree with the need for assessment, but I think that maybe it should be a more holistic process rather than relying on one standardized test to tell us what, how our students are achieving and what benchmarks they're obtaining. We need to have communication with the teachers. We need to find out what the students need, other than a test score. I mean, if we have such a low competency rate in mathematics and reading, I think that we need to, we need to close the loop. Instead of providing new resources and new equipment and things of this nature, we need to also look at how that's affected students' learning, and the only way to do that is by communicating with the teachers.
Great, thank you. Mr. Ingram?
Holding people accountable, holding their feet to the fire, as Mr. Sussman pointed out, and Mr. General, the five-year plan, that's great, but what, you know, this does us no good, as you pointed out, to put it up on a shelf and say, that's great with what we've done. So absolutely holding everyone accountable for it. And I'll say it again, I think we've got a wonderful group of teachers, and we've got wonderful management, and they have prepared something now that is certainly going to help the children reach those goals. Now, let's implement it. And if we have to, and we will, let's hold the feet to the fire and hold people accountable for it.
Thank you. Our next question is, what is your vision for the role that the Board of Education plays in local economic development? And we'll begin with Mr. General.
Well, as Mr. Sussman said, education is important in the real estate industry. With, you know, when you have an excellent school system, people are more likely to move into your area by houses in your area. Also, business, as you know, is more likely to move to a place where they have a qualified workforce. You know, if our students are not graduating, if our students are not hitting certain education goals, we're not at a desirable location for business in the industry.
Thank you. Mr. Ingram?
Yes, plan, plan development. Someone mentioned earlier that our cost per child, cost per student was higher. Well, that has in part to do with the fact that we have developments, we have capacity that's going to bring us into the next five to 10 years. So as that capacity fills up, obviously, those costs per students will go down. But we do need to be mindful of the growth, as was pointed out, you know, what's our growth expected in the county over the next five and 10 years to make sure that our infrastructure is in place to meet those, to meet those needs and plan accordingly.
Thank you. Mr. Sussman?
And as Mr. Ingram pointed out, you know, we do have the capacity for growth right now. Years ago, when Riverview Elementary School was in the pipeline, and then 2008, 2009 hit, that school was well under development at that point in time. And they opened that school and district students to go to that school, and that was the choice of the school board at that time. That is attributing to some of the additional cost per student that we're working with right now. And we will be able to absorb the growth into those schools. So I don't necessarily think it's a redistricting thing by closing a school, you know, I don't necessarily agree with that. But as far as being the Realtor, yes, the growth is, as far as not only developers that are coming up into this area, that are going to employ people, that are going to live up in this area as well. But one of the things I love about the Hope Scholarship, it was intended to keep people in the state of Georgia to work and, you know, help this state economically, and it is working. What I see up here in Dawson County and Lunkin County, very family-oriented, people that graduate in Dawson County High School, they attend UNG, and they love it up here, and they stay up here, and they work up here, and that's going to contribute to the growth of the of this county.
Thank you. Our next question is, describe your thoughts about the current CTAE, that's Career Technical Agricultural Education Program, and the College and Career Academy, and its interaction and involvement with local businesses? And we'll begin with Mr. Ingram.
Can you repeat the question, please?
Sure thing. Sorry, it's a mouthful for me, too. Describe your thoughts about the current CTAE, that's Career Technical Agricultural Education Program, as well as the College and Career Academy, and their interaction and involvement with local businesses.
Full disclosure, I've had limited experience with, with those programs. I've heard a lot about them, and I've heard some, a lot of positive things about them, especially our agricultural department. So we're excited about that. But beyond that, little else to say.
Absolutely. Mr. Sussman?
Well, I think we're very fortunate to be able to have those programs here in Dawson County. When you, when you look at the, you know, the agricultural part of Dawson County, you go west, and it is, I mean, farmland. And, you know, that's part of economic development. And if we're going to teach our children that skill, it is pretty huge. Because not everybody's necessarily going to go on to a higher education after they graduate high school. So I think having those opportunities available to the students and getting more engaged and getting the community engaged, there are plenty of farms out there right now, especially on the agricultural, agricultural side, that could use those students as mentoring program to work on those farms.
Thank you. Mr. Ingram?
I'm very excited about the agricultural program. I just saw a couple of days ago, I saw how we're going to use SPOLOs funds to really develop a fantastic facility on the Dawson High School campus. My daughter is interested in agriculture, it's her major in college, so I wish that it had been there when she was around. We, we've always had a good relationship with FFA, and I know there's been a robust program, but this is just going to take it to the next level. So it's an exciting time for Dawson High. I have to admit, the College of Career, I'm not very versed, I haven't heard a lot about that. But from what I understand, it's geared towards students who are going to go into the workforce rather than going to college. And I think it's a fantastic idea that if we're going to, if we're going to prepare our students in this way, which, that we should be in close contact with the business needs of the area, so that we're not losing these highly qualified, this highly qualified workforce to outside counties. Let's keep them right here in Dawson County.
Absolutely, thank you. The system, teachers, administrators, custodians, bus drivers, cafeteria personnel, and support staff are the heart of our system. As a board member, how do you intend to support the staff to ensure good morale and excellence in education? We'll begin with Mr. Sussman.
Great. Well, as a board member and the board at large, if you will, is, is an oversight committee, more so than getting deeply involved in, you know, all the, all the teachers and staff. And that's the responsibilities of the principals of each one of those schools, to manage their schools accordingly. If there are issues that are brought to the board with regard to issues related to teachers, staff, administrators, et cetera, that's something that the board will definitely have to get engaged with. But on an individual basis, I mean, I certainly, you know, want to support all of those people because they're the support mechanism for the students of Dawson County. So whatever we need to do to make things right, depending upon a situation that might arise, that's when we need to, you know, address it with the board at large.
Thank you. Mr. Ingram?
Thank you. Education doesn't happen without the teachers and without the support systems in place. You know, if it were to be my decision, I would say that I would support offering competitive pay, competitive compensation packages to teachers and staff. I am strongly in favor of the teacher's retirement system of Georgia, and if we're ever up to me, I would, I would absolutely vote in favor of, of maintaining that retirement system. And I would do anything that I, that I could possibly do to maintain the retirement fund for the support staff and other employees that Dawson County school system.
Great, thank you. Mr. Ingram?
Since my wife is one of those, can't you say what they said? No, seriously, they are the heart. And unfortunately, sometimes they're overlooked a little bit. We have great teachers, but the support staff, the bus drivers, the maintenance, the lunch, what if we didn't have those individuals? And one of the issues that have kind of come to my ear of late is our retaining good employees. And so I think that's something that we need to address going forward. How can we retain it? Obviously, compensation's going to be at the tip of that spear in discussion. So do we need to increase compensation, maybe reviewing what other surrounding areas? And, you know, going back to that innovation that we're coming from outside this system, you know, how can we do? Not maybe just through compensation, as you mentioned, you know, benefits and stuff. Do we increase benefit? Because right now, it's part-time support staff that don't get benefits and stuff. So great discussions, I mean, I think that's a, a long time, could be a long discussion in itself. So kudos to the teachers, kudos to the administration, but let's not forget the support staff because they are so critical to having a properly functioning school system.
Absolutely. Well, I know none of us have a crystal ball, and we're certainly in a very interesting time, I guess we could all say, due to the pandemic. But if elected, what would you hope would be the key accomplishments of the board during your time of service? And we're going to begin with Mr. Ingram.
What would I hope would be the key accomplishments of the board? Well, you gave them an easy one there. I, I think, I think the most important thing is, is education results. I would like to see us improve reading, improve mathematics, improve our graduation rate. And obviously, we're going to increase our agriculture program and our career program. So hopefully, we will, we will be producing a lot of graduates, many of whom are prepared for college, or all of them that are prepared for college or careers.
Great, thank you. Mr. Ingram?
To put in place all of the policies, to provide all of the resources that will allow our teachers and our management to do their jobs and to do it to the best of their ability. I can quickly say, I'd like to increase the graduation rate. That'd be great. That'd be, that'd be a goal in itself. But I think it does the other, you know, some of the other things unjust if we don't just say, provide the resources necessary to make sure that our management, our teachers and support staff can provide, can do the absolute best at making our children ready, educated, fully educated, ready for, ready for life.
Great, thank you. Mr. Sussman?
Well, as I mentioned earlier, and I would love for nothing more than to have 100% graduation rate, and I know Superintendent Gibbs would like that as well, and that's, that's the goal. There's nothing wrong with setting that goal. But also to make sure that we are, you know, looking at the bigger picture. You've got elementary schools feeding into middle schools and junior high, and then eventually high school. So it's like a funnel. And you've got to make sure that you've got consistency across all levels. So if one of the elementary schools is not, not producing or showing ratings where they should be, and I think we should all be, all the schools need to be above, above-average ratings at the minimum. And that would be one of my goals and accomplishments on the board. But being a fiscal conservative, we have a responsibility as well to look at the budget. And as an example, when COVID hit, a budget is one thing, but you've got to look at where you might be able to cut, because you don't have now the revenue streams coming in any longer. And so just because you establish a budget doesn't mean you can't go back and look and see where you might cut, or where you might delay a project. And the other thing, as far as being on the board and success, is as the growth happens and we've got more rooftops coming into Dawson County, we should be looking at lowering, lowering the mill rate and lowering property taxes. I'm a, I'm a property owner and taxpayer, and I would like to see nothing more than my property tax go down, but I'm also doing my fair share to support the school system.
Thank you. This is our final question before we get to closing statements. So for the last question, why should a Dawson County parent vote for you? And we'll start with Mr. Ingram.
Fully vested in the community, 100%. Again, to reiterate, I've lived here my whole life. My kids, my family lives here. There's nothing more than I want, nothing more than I want than to see the Board of Education, the school system be the top of, the top of its class in the state of Georgia, nationally, for that matter. I'm not going anywhere. We're here, and I'm sure my grandkids will come through the school system, so appreciate your vote.
Thank you. Mr. Sussman?
Well, I bring a fresh perspective to the table, having been through very many school systems across the country, seeing successes and failures. So a fresh set of eyes as an outsider, if you will, that I believe that I can bring some different perspective to Dawson County and some of the best practices that I've personally experienced, experienced with my children who go into school.
Thank you. Mr. Ingram?
I've spent a great deal of time, especially the past few months, talking to people in the community about their concerns as it pertains to education and the school system. And in front of this, I've built my platform, which is based on fiscal conservatism, transparency, and looking to the future. Going forward, I'll continue to represent the people of Dawson County, represent their interests, and I will be there to listen to them and take what they have to say to the Board of Education.
Great, thank you. Well, that wraps up our questions. Next, we're going to go into closing statements, you'll each get two minutes. And if you don't mind mentioning how someone can find out more information about you, or how they could contact you as you close it out. And we're going to begin with Mr. Sussman.
Well, thank you, Kristi, and thank you, Nathan and David, for being on this panel along with me. I know that we all have the same desires as one another from not only fiscal responsibility, but also commitment to the community. And any one of us here, I think, would do a very good job on the board. So I'm honored to be up here with the two of you, by all means, so thank you. Again, I bring a business mind, more so to the table. I've had budgets to deal with, I've had to react to certain things that are unexpected. And I believe the taxpayers expect that from us as the oversight committee. So I'm going to watch out for the budget, but I also want to make sure that we are giving what is needed to do the job of the students, the administrators, the staff, the bus drivers, so we can support them. And the ultimate goal is that 100% graduation rate, and the ultimate goal is to get all of our schools above average rating. And thank you for having me here tonight.
Absolutely. Mr. Ingram?
Thank you. I've also enjoyed listening to both of you gentlemen, learning more about your views. I think, I think Mr. Sussman is right, we're all in line as far as most things go. Like I said, my platform is based on fiscal conservatism, increased transparency. Not that our Board of Education isn't transparent, it's on the website for everyone to see. And it's also, it's been reported, it's covered by the Dawson County paper. I'd like to find some way to, to disseminate the information to the public, make it more available to them. That's, that's one thing that I've noticed when I've been in the community lately, is that people don't know what's going on, and I think they should. Rather than coming from this, from the perspective of a businessman, I'm an educator. I think, like I said before, I'm uniquely qualified to listen to the concerns of parents of students and teachers and support staff of the Dawson County school system, and represent them on Dawson County Board of Education.
Thank you. Mr. Ingram?
Yes, once again, thanks to the chamber for setting this up. Thanks to my fellow candidates, likewise, it was an honor. But also, thanks for those that are tuning in. Thank you for taking the time out of your day to watch this. Thank you for being, having, adding value to the election process, to getting to know the candidates. Because I go to council meetings, I work every year on a $60 million budget with the city that I work with. And it's sometimes concerning to see that we do all this work and we get sometimes some comments on social media, instead of elected or management or elected official, and then, please, come to the Board of Education meetings, or whatever you do, get, you know, get active in that, make your voice heard. Anyone can, please, I would love to hear comments from anybody, and my email address is in Ingram@Weststream.net, it's just my first initial, my last name, in Ingram@Weststream.net. Would love to hear your comments on anything that I can do for you in my remaining term. About six months ago, a friend of mine, Will Wade, vacated the Board of Education seat to pursue a seat at the state level. I was honored to be appointed to fill that vacancy until this election. And I would absolutely be honored to have your support, if you so choose, and finish the remaining two years of that term. But thanks to everybody again.
Great, thank you. Thank you to the candidates for joining us tonight. As they have all said, I think it's clear that we have many people that are passionate about our school system. And we at the Chamber very much value our relationship with the school system and all that the teachers and the support staff, particularly through this pandemic, have done to make sure that not just our children, but our community is cared for. So we appreciate all of you tuning in, and we'll be bringing you more updates as the election continues. Thank you.